It's about the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. You start with some pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you say it again, please?
Please hear our prayers. Dear Lord, we ask that you watch over this meeting and guide us and direct us as we make decisions that impact our community, our residents. I ask that you watch over all of our community. Guide us and direct us in ways that are pleasing to you, dear Lord. And please watch over first responders, all of them, and keep them safe while they do the jobs that provide safety and a lifeline for our community members. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Aaron, roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Sigala.
Here.
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Coram declare.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, no?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I did put in the D S a slightly modified agenda that changed a couple items. Modified the scheduled appearances, created the correct title for ordinance number eight ninety-six, and there will be no financial report seen. So if you all accept those modifications, that'd be great.
I move to accept the agenda as modified.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda as modified. Any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Aye.
Counselor Sigala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, approval of consent agenda.
Just an additional item, Mr. Mayor, there is a second accounts payable. Council rule sheet goes out of the one that goes in your pocket of the government's budget today, which you'll have to check for this evening.
Is that the top copy first?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the consent agenda and review and approval of accounts payable.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the approval of consent agenda on minutes of the regular meeting is September fifth. Review and approval of accounts payable. Any more discussion?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Sigala.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Citizen comments? Scheduled appearances in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please file the appropriate form for the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Aaron?
Okay, all right then, that's fine. Yeah, I've, uh, Jaime is absent tonight, working with some of the recreational activities that he's responsible for. So, I'm, uh, I'm happy all that's going on. We have spoken about a little bit of press that we've given to the, um, to the ice rink that, that is here in town. How many of you know we have an ice rink in Montavista? Yeah, see, that's, it hasn't got a lot of exposure. It's kind of a cult thing. There's a group that, that attends and takes advantage of it. We're in our, actually in our fifth season. And we're, I've been after something I like to call, it never quite got off the ground, but we're seeing the effect of it. It's happening anyhow in spite of me, but when we first got into office, I was after selecting some citizen solution groups to bring solutions to whatever issues, whatever opportunities, whatever events might have come up. Well, this idea of the frozen fest, as it's referred to here, came from one of those citizens that was selected, Ms. Linda Archieta, and has been after me to do something with the ice rink. And this was the time I got together with Jaime, and we came up with some ideas that are, that have been growing, and I'll give you a little bit of a breakdown of it right now. What we're planning is a three-day festival that will take place from November, the last few days of November into the, so I believe that's the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, into the first day of December, which ends up, it's that three-day weekend, it's while school is out, it's right after Thanksgiving, and kind of runs into Black Friday, but you can spend your Black Friday coming in because, down to Sky High, because what we've done is, and we're still working on that, but we've got consent from, from a few different activities, some of the events that have been scheduled around that time, that are winter, holiday, Christmas festivities we are working to bring together during that whole activity time. And that, with some activities we've never really had here before, there'll be games for the kids and even some broom hockey, if anybody knows what that is, but it's basically hockey without sticks and without skates. But for anybody that's not an ice skater, but possibly some, some ice sculpting, but the two, uh, two that we are dealing with right now, and we've got some others coming together, but Kids Connection with Santa's Workshop will be in the main arena of Sky High. During all of this, there will also be, we're also working with the chamber that's not quite complete yet, but the Holiday Fest and Bazaar that is usually scheduled around that time. So, in any case, we'll have most, if not all, of the holiday festivities and festivals and events that have been scheduled around that time together for the opportunity of more attendance and more events, more activities, games, prizes, and, and more. So, what will, again, that's the end of November, we'll have a little more detail on that, and we'll have Mr. Hurtado come in before this event comes in to go into a little more detail. But that's basically the, the outline, and the, the idea is to not only expose and to celebrate the ice rink that's here, because we do have one and folks have been enjoying it, we just need to get more exposure of that. But aside from that, to bring the community together for several tangential events and festivities that have usually taken place around that time, to come together as one. So we'll have typically larger festivities. We'll also have a selection of, of food trucks, snacks, and music. The ice rink could be decorated a little more so than you've ever seen it, and just tying all of that together, we're really believing that it's gonna bring more of the community out, so tell your friends and family. And just, it's, what, bottom line, what we're doing is creating something for the fun of it. So, plan on that and come out, but we'll have some more information for you on that in the next, in the next few meetings. So, just wanted to make everybody aware of that, and we do need volunteers and help with that, so feel free to step up, and we'll be glad to have your help.
He means all you high school kids.
Absolutely.
It'd be great if you guys had a civic group or something at the high school that would want to get involved. If you do think about it, call the city or call Jaime.
Oh, there, there was one other part. If the city was interested, we're obviously raising funds from merchants and, and from the community in general, so it's sort of a, it's kind of a city thing, but it's mostly a, a private enterprise. And I'll leave that in the hands of the city to, to, if you should choose to make some kind of cash or in-kind or service donation, and that would be, it doesn't have to be tonight, but it's something, yeah, I think, I don't think most of you were aware of all of this, so it's something we could talk about in the future, but again, it's supported by the community and the merchants in our town, so it's something we definitely wanna support if we possibly can, so spread the word.
Sure there'll be flyers coming?
Yeah, we'll have, yeah, flyers. I thought you were saying fires. In, in fact, we will have, what are they, the pits, fire pits, and, and very possibly the standing heating for folks that wanna sit around at the tables, that will be there to have, enjoy your snacks and time and watch some of the festivities. And again, the ice sculpting thing is, is, is on the edge right now, but we very possibly will have that. If we don't have that, we're going to have snow and so, so there will be some, and also we'll have snow, right?
We hope so.
The, the weather predicted is supposedly going to be cold, so I'm pretty sure we're gonna have ice, but yeah, snow would be nice, too. We'll see. So Merry Christmas.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. So if you have a comment, you can come up to the podium, there should be a form up there. Be sure to put your name, state your name, and sign that paper. Everybody got anything?
My name's Terrell Luna. I'm here kind of speaking for myself and behalf of my business, Lunatic Motorsports. I know last meeting you guys kinda had a lot of misconceptions kind of brought up to you guys. One, for the fact that I'm just, you know, raising cane up and down that street, I mean, that's, that's not what I'm in business for, it's not what I intend at all, I don't even condone, you know, street racing outside of the shop at all. There's one thing that kinda bugged me a little bit with, with that was the complaints of, of very late nights, of like, like four in the morning on a Sunday. I, I mean, I go to church here at the LDS Church, this is down the road, and I'm, four in the morning, I'm asleep getting ready for church, I don't wanna be, you know, I don't wanna be that slacker walking in twenty minutes late, so. And I, I do recognize that there is, you know, a noise ordinance in town, and I, you know, I try to follow those the best that I can, but there is some vehicles that were modified outside of my shop that come in that were, you know, I'm, I'm starting out, I started this business with three hundred dollars in my pocket, and, you know, it's, I can't turn away business just because a lady down the street's, you know, getting woken up at noon from her nap, but I just wanted to come and, you know, clear up some misconceptions. I'm not a hooligan that's, you know, trying to make a Fast and Furious movie for myself. But one, one question I did have for the police department was, was I the only one that was, like, the chief came to my shop and he gave me a, a piece of paper and kinda gave me a verbal warning of modifications? Was I the only one, or did he go to other, other shops that performed?
I, I know he adopted you, but I don't know what other shop he went to. Who else he adopted?
Okay, 'cause, okay, all right, 'cause I just, you know, I didn't want everyone pointing fingers at me when, you know, I don't, I don't do everybody's exhaust in town, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Do you, you got something to say? Do you have a rest? It's no time like the present to get involved. Okay. Forst, ordinances?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. So in front of you this evening, you have ordinance number eight ninety-six, which is amending the Montavista Municipal Code, section eight seven one hundred, loud and obnoxious noises. I wanna talk about the ordinance a little bit, the draft that you have in front of you. I'm also gonna recommend to the council tonight that staff would like to withdraw this at the moment. I spent some more time with it this week, and I think there's some overriding of the existing code, which wasn't intended. Now, this wasn't actually aimed at any particular business, and the motor vehicle noise part is already part of the code, okay? And so that part already existed. Actually, the intent of this amendment of the code was to create, the existing code is very vague about noises generated from private residences and commercial businesses, but actually kinda came about based on noise complaints, complaints that had to do with individual residences. So that was the intent of this drafting of the ordinance, and we still feel like that needs to be addressed. The only remedy the police department really has at the moment is they can write a county charge of disorderly conduct, or something of that nature, and that doesn't always fit the bill or the level of the offense. So the idea was to create something where if somebody's having a loud, you know, a loud party's one thing, but to say that they've got their stereo cranked up to fourteen and, you know, you can hear it three blocks away, that's an issue. But our current code doesn't really create a defining way for the, the police department or code enforcement to deal with it. So that is the intent of redrafting this. But as I've spent some more time with it this week, I feel like the redrafting of it probably took out some of the, might overwrite some of the useful pieces that are already in the code, which wasn't intended. So I would actually recommend that the council table this ordinance indefinitely and let staff take another crack at it. Like I said, it's not aimed at anybody in particular, but the general intent, I'm not sure we quite captured that. So that's my recommendation to council tonight, and I'm sorry I didn't quite get to that, but I, well, been busy doing some other things, but as I was reviewing it, I was kinda like, well, I'm not sure we captured the essence of what staff's was, staff's intent was for the council to, you know, create an opportunity for the police department and code, you know, and to deal with this, and, and for neighbors to make complaints. I get calls from residents and so does the police department about noises from residents in particular, not so much the businesses. I mean, we heard a noise complaint about businesses at last meeting, but that is more the exception than the rule of what we get. So we want to be able to deal with that in a fair and equitable manner, but I don't think we quite hit that on the head with this draft, so that is my recommendation this evening.
You need to put that motion forward.
Motion for that?
Yes, so we would need to motion to table ordinance eight ninety-six indefinitely.
Okay, I move that we table ordinance eight ninety-six indefinitely, amending the Montavista Municipal Code, section eight dash seven dash one hundred, on loud and obnoxious noises.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll table this indefinitely. Ordinance number eight ninety-six, amending the Montavista Municipal Code, section dash seven, excuse me, section eight dash seven dash one hundred, loud and obnoxious noises. Is there any more discussion?
Actually, I would probably like to clear up the indefinitely part. You're obviously going over this with staff, gonna come back with it sometime in the next thirty days or two. It is gonna be indefinitely.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how long it'll take. We, we've kinda got a full plate, and retooling this may take a little longer than, you could, what's the first meeting in December? Sorry. I don't, everyone's like, oh, the calendar? December fifth? So if you wanna modify the motion to December fifth, I think we could have it retooled by then adequately.
Okay, I'd like to modify the motion on ordinance eight ninety-six, amending the Montavista Municipal Code, section eight dash seven dash one hundred, on loud and obnoxious noises, to be reexamined on December fifth.
It's been moved and seconded to amend this motion for ordinance number eight ninety-six to come to the table on December fifth, city council. Any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Sigala.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
When we're on the subject of noise ordinance, I got a phone call right before I came, in regards to your guys' business, and the gentleman spoke very highly of what you do over there, and he says he hears nothing from you guys over there. So respectfully, he wanted me to pass that on as this ordinance was to be read tonight. So he wanted everybody to know that. Says you did a good job over there, and you respect it for what you do, and he said, he's open door, he faces your guys' building, and he said, I don't hear nothing. And when I was on the phone with him, somebody went down Adam Street in that block at a high rate of speed, and I could hear it over here talking to me in his business, so.
It's, it's, it's actually pretty, pretty common for quite a few cars to go through there, you know, moving at a high rate of speed. If, I mean, if I, if I could control that, I mean, I wouldn't in a heartbeat, 'cause I have my dogs out there, and I would hate for one of them to get hit at all.
And I think you made a very good point when you said that you don't work on all the mufflers that go through Montavista. A lot of people have loud mufflers and loud motorcycles and vehicles already, and there might be one parked at your shop that you're doing something completely different to. And so, there you go. Point well taken.
Thank you, Forrest. I appreciate it.
Okay, so, you've all seen, I think, at this point, I wanna thank the council for attending the Potato Festival and talking to people about the one cent sales tax election, and we had a booth there, and I appreciate you all getting involved with that, despite the rainstorm, I think we talked to a lot of people. The board, nice boards we had got a little damaged, but thanks for trying to save those, Kathleen, but we'll get some new ones. And so, you know, the, the process is still going on, and, and, you know, there's the two parts, there's the city sales tax election, and then, which, you know, has its three parts, which is Public Works, Public Safety, and Sky High, and then there's the actual building itself, the, the cost estimating is going on, and by mid-October, the Friends of Sky High should actually have, you know, and we'll have those numbers too, but a more developed cost estimate for the project. The contractors and architects are working on that, and we have a meeting in mid-October to get down to that point. You all have the budget drafts, I think we had a really nice budget workshop last time, just a reminder, twenty-fifth is our next one, next Tuesday, and we'll go through the general fund. I'm gonna keep this really short tonight. I did go to a conference over in Montrose, put on by Downtown Colorado Inc., and it was regarding evolution and ideas for urban renewal authorities. And I guess the good news is that a lot of things that we're doing, other people are trying to do, so that was kinda interesting. You know, also picked up some really interesting ideas and scope of things that some other folks are doing, particularly Montrose is doing some really interesting things with their Urban Renewal Authority, and I'm gonna touch some, with base with them on some other things. I did wanna let you all know, and I let the Urban Renewal Authority Commission know today, that in fact, that one seventeen Adams project is moving forward, and we signed a sales contract for that property today. We'll probably close on it next week or the week after, depending on the title work, but that's all signed, sealed, and pretty much delivered. I mean, there's no unknown issues with it, I'm sure the title work will be fine, and then our partners on that, which is Three Guys Farms, or Pub, excuse me, will then be able to work on that project. So they're very excited, we're really excited, God bless you. Kind of a nice, it, it'll be a really neat project, so we're really looking forward to it, it's kind of an exciting day to close at least the contract part of that deal. So, now, we also wanted to thank Rio Grande Savings Loan, we made a few modifications to the deed restriction that we had when we got the property, and, you know, Sean Davis and those folks over there were very helpful, and so I think everybody's happy with the deal, and we'll get a new business right there at that property, so that's pretty exciting. Other than that, we're really busy, a lot of interesting things going on, working on a couple economic development things that, we'll see if they pan out, but they're kinda interesting, so that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me. All righty, thank you.
Forrest. Mr. Fore, take it.
Mr. Mayor, council, obviously Chief couldn't be here, so he asked me to give the police report again. So he has a couple of events that we have. We have Coffee with the Cop, it's changing date and venue. So it was on Saturdays at Mountain View, it's no longer on Saturdays at Mountain View, it's gonna be the first Wednesday of the month at the new coffee shop, Rain Brews. So this, the first one we're gonna have is October second, eight to ten, at Rain Brews. Everybody's welcome to come, have a cup of coffee, Chief should be there, whatever officers are available should be there, can have any questions, comments, anything, can come talk with us. We had Neighborhood Watch on Monday, unfortunately, I was not able to go, I don't know if you were able to go.
Yes.
If there's, I don't know, there was supposed to be a discussion about the Needle Reduction Exchange Program, I don't know how it went, I mean.
Went very well. It was a very good conference with questions and answers, was an excellent presentation.
Well, that's good to hear, that's good to hear. And then, just a reminder again, Crime Stoppers is having their raffle that ends the thirty-first, and can get the tickets from board, board members, yeah. Just a couple of stats and what's going on in the city. Just a reminder, we've had some vehicle break-ins in the past week, just gotta put it out there, don't leave valuables in your car, don't leave your cars unlocked. That was the, the theme that we had for these break-ins, cars were left unlocked and valuables were left inside. And so just a reminder, do what you can to prevent this, don't leave items, personal valuable items in your car, and, and then leave it unlocked, just to kinda do what you can to prevent this from happening.
Is there like a certain area that's being affected, or?
Um, we took more complaints on Jefferson, Madison, Adams, kinda that little area right there, maybe the five hundred block, six hundred block. We got a divi- It was a silver sedan with a headlight out, a possible female involved, but that could be any number of cars. But just trying to put it out there, you know, do what you can to protect yourself, and, and don't make it easy for somebody to get in, break in, and get stuff, so. For August, we had one thousand and four calls for service. That's traffic stops and calls that we got as a police department. And we had, up to, to, through August, we have one thousand thirty-one summons, which is about average, so. We're about average for the summons and for the calls for service. And just a note for our burglaries that we had, we're well below our average. We have twenty-one burglaries through the nineteenth with a seventy percent clearance rate. That's coming down a lot from two thousand seventeen and eighteen, where we had sixty-two and fifty respectively, and now we're on pace for about forty or so. So it is going in the right direction. Some administrative, administration notes. Just an update on our SRO. We do have a full-time SRO in the schools. Officer David Pino has been in the schools now for probably a month or so, once he came back from vacation. He says it seems to be going pretty well. He's getting positive feedback from not only the students, seems like there's quite a few here, but a lot of the administrators and teachers. They said it seems to be going really well, having him in the schools. And he's in all the schools, both elementaries, the middle, the Delta Center, and the high school. But there, he, he likes it there. He's being really involved with a lot that they have going on, not just police issues, but they have him doing different presentations. He just told me that he was going to be a judge for some contest they have going on, so he's getting involved with a lot of, of things that they have going on at the school. The school district is looking for funds to try and help fund his position. It's very early, they're still trying to find something, just to help out, to pay, even if it's for, I think you said overtime or something, so that way he can go to different games and, and things like that. But I, I think it's really good that the school's showing that they're as serious as the police department is about keeping the kids safe. They wanted to make sure that we have somebody in the school, just as much as the PD wanted to make sure that we have somebody in the school. For code enforcement, again, we have education and enforcement ongoing. Just to touch on, you know, the complaint that was for your business, we do have traffic complaints and noise complaints and things like that at all times of the day, all areas of the city. It just depends. I mean, sometimes it's cars leaving your shop or in your area, so they could associate it with your shop. Sometimes it's on the highway going out of town, and it's just all over. And again, when we do get those complaints, we do have to address them, just like it was addressed with you, you know, and a lot of times it's harder to find these complaints and find these cars if they're going out of town, or something's all the way on the other side of town. We do have to go check it out, but, you know, being that your shop was there, you know, talk to you and kind of address it with you, so that way, if it is coming from your shop, you can address it with your customers and things like that. But, you know, it, it's one of those things that we're always getting these types of complaints, and we're always trying to look at it and do what we can to prevent it. Per, from Officer Montoya, he says he's finding positive results, that they're putting the notes in the water bills, as far as alley cleanups and yard cleanups and things like that. He's had a few court cases recently, he said, where they had to clean up yards and things like that, and it's showing out there. You can definitely see the difference. We had a couple of calls earlier, and actually it was in alleyway, and, and you can definitely tell the people that are, are cleaning up, and, you know, they have yard debris that's fresh, and they're cleaning, cleaning up their alleys and things like that, so. And I think it's, he's doing a really good job. It sounds like they're in the final process of hiring a new ordinance officer. I don't think we have hired one yet. Last I heard was that they're in the final background stages and gonna make a job offer to somebody here, probably in the next week or so, is my understanding, if that's right. And hopefully, we'll have enough time to get, have Patrick train him and help him out a little bit before he goes full-time to, to the mechanics. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Just wanted to comment, but when you mentioned the locking your car and that kinda thing, some, some folks think that that's, your, your car is just kind of a random thing, so I mean, why are the chances that somebody will leave it open? It's not really random. I, how do I say this? I know somebody that knows somebody that has been in that ludicrous field, and literally what happens is they'll walk down the street just testing handles. And so, if it's, if it's unlocked, you're automatically a target. So it's not just a random thing, there's a very good possibility if it's unlocked to you for a short time.
And it's, you could actually follow, the, the calls that we got this last weekend, you could actually follow where they had went. And just like you said, that's what we're thinking. Crime of opportunity, door was unlocked, oh, let's see what's in there, take what we want and head out. But, so that's a good reminder, just to lock your doors, don't leave valuables in there in your cars. If they're gonna break in, they're gonna break in, but try not to make it easy for them to get property, or steal something, or take something, so.
Thank you, Forrest. Appreciate it.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing pretty good, I gotta admit. It's only been forty minutes, and I'm already up here. That's not what I expected for tonight.
Don't curse us, man.
Yeah. Well, I have a fairly short report tonight, so it shouldn't be too bad. We've been extremely busy, but a lot of it's major projects that we haven't really finished up. So I'm just gonna list off a few things that they threw on here. We attended National Night Out. We brought the audio system. I think that went extremely well. This is the first one I've ever been to, but it, it seemed extremely busy, and everyone was saying it was, it's getting bigger and bigger each year, so I'm glad with how that one went. We also took the drone, flew it up twice, I believe. I was there for the first one, not the second one, but we had a lot of kids who are really interested in that one. But, I mean, the drone is always interesting to fly. I love that thing. We also have completely redone the whole phone system, so we used a lot, or all of the hardware is the exact same, but we went through, reprogrammed everything. We've set up, like, their voicemails, for instance, it gets sent to their email, and I mean, currently that's not working, but I'm, I'm working on it, and we'll hopefully have that fixed here before Monday. We also added two conference phones, one right back here, one over at the PD. Those weren't working at first, but we got them up and working, they seem to be doing pretty good. Hopefully, that'll help a lot with a lot of those conference calls they were getting. But along with that one, we've also been working on the network here. We completely segregated the public network and the private network. I mean, they're, they're both fairly private, you have to have to pa, have a passer to get onto either, but what we were seeing is, you know, everyone here in the city connecting with their phones or their tablets, and I mean, that's what was causing a lot of problems with your guys' surfaces, or your Samsung Chromebooks. So, so, so far it's getting better and better, and this Saturday, which we have listed as Armageddon, we're ripping apart the whole network, and, well, it'll either be an easy fix, or we'll be here all night and all of the next day until it's back up and running one of the two, so let's hope for the best on that one. But, other than that one, we worked with the finance department and everyone up front to get a check processing unit. I'm not sure what that thing's called, but allows them to batch all their checks at the end of the night. That thing seems to work fairly good, and I know it'll make their lives a lot easier. And other than patches, things along those lines. That's it. So unless you guys have any questions? I, I'm working on appreciating myself in this one.
Counsel, community state commission, Counsel Ray. Victor, please.
The, excuse me, Potato Fest was, was fun. It was a blast. I didn't get caught in the rain, so that's alright. A bunch of people out there, a bunch of activities, a bunch of kids that weren't able to go, I think will end up coming out next year because of the hype. You know, I, I called my kids out there and was like, bring your friends, and tell them to bring their friends, and, you know, and some kids didn't wanna go, and then whenever they passed by, they were like, hey, I wanna go. You know, so I think that was great. The one cent project fund, I think that's gonna be a, a big success. I've had a lot of good feedback from pretty much every single person that I've talked to about it. A lot of people are interested in funding for the Sky High, for the streets, and for public safety, for sure. So I think that's a, a great plan to have in place for the future of our, of our wonderful little town here. Another thing, too, that kinda gets me is the way people like to pick on the police I, I have a bunch of friends on Facebook, and I see posts about, oh, we're just riding a dirt bike, and the cops are bothering us, and da, blah, 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 blah. And I'm, I'm, I'm somebody that's under the authority, so when somebody tells me, hey, Victor, you need to look into this, and gives me something to look at, I have to do it. I can't just be like, well, I'm not gonna look into that, because then I get in trouble, right? So it's the same thing with these guys, you know, if they get a call for something little, they, they can't just blow it off and be like, oh, I don't even care about that. They have to touch base, they have to be accountable to their supervisors. So if, if, if you're doing something as simple as riding a dirt bike or something, you know, you're probably gonna get the cops calling, you know? There's things that we know we shouldn't do, and if we know we shouldn't do them, then we probably shouldn't do them, because then, you know, we're gonna get the cops calling on us, and then we make them to be out the bad guys. So I, it just kinda gets on my nerves a little bit, just because these guys put up way too much, I think, sometimes. So give them a break, you know? I think they deserve it.
If you don't wanna take it, don't break the law. Right? If you don't wanna be in trouble, just walk. And I know we all test it.
Uh, too much, I accept that I just did get back from three days up in Del Norte at the Rural Philanthropy Days. If you don't know what that is, it's understandable, it's Rural Philanthropy Days, we mean, but it's, it's the statewide and even federal, federal branded funders for nonprofit organizations. And that, that might sound a little complex, too, but nonprofit organizations are not nonprofit to begin with, but nonetheless, that's the designation. And they provide a phenomenal service to our community, our, our county, state, nation, more important than what you probably even, even have thought about. But I just wanted to pass that on. I'm not gonna go into all the detail of what, what does happen there, but it's something if, as long as we have a complement of our, of our youth here from high school, that's something worth finding out about what is involved in all of that, and it's part of the free enterprise system, and it's something, it may not sound real exciting, but it's definitely something worth being involved with, because these are the people that are directly involved with just exactly whatever the needs of the community happen to be. And they will seek, that's kinda what we're supposed to be doing, and we do, but the, it's the citizens and the, the people of this town and country that, that actually make a difference. And I'll, I'll try to get some of that information out to the high schools and that kinda thing, just so that you know, but it was, it was an eye-opening thing for me. It's a lot of information that I already knew or was somewhat familiar with, but it impressed on me how important that segment of the community really is. It's, if you're looking for involvement in something that's making a difference in terms of temporary jobs while you're still in school, or even something a little more permanent, that is a segment of the community and the economy that's well worth looking into. Nonprofit does not mean you work for free. You could, you could volunteer, but, no. Nonprofit simply means that it's a, that's a separate tax designation, and they do rely, volunteering is one of the, with some of these organizations, some of the best things you can possibly do to really get a feel for what's going on in the community and become a part of it. So just wanted, I didn't plan on getting into that whole sermon, but it is, it is important, so I'll, I'll, I'll pass on all the other information and just leave it there.
Alright, thanks, Gary. Kathy?
Sure. It was interesting, I didn't see Gary, but the Rural Philanthropy Days was, was huge for, for Del Norte.
I'm glad we didn't see each other.
There were lots of people there, there were lots of people in town. It would be a cool thing to have happen in Montavista sometime in the future, but it's only been in Mont, in the Sandless Valley one other time, and that was in Crete, so maybe down the road it's something. But it brought a lot of people, there were people staying in Montavista that were attending, and I'm sure there are people staying in El Mosa that were attending. And these are people that came from all around the state of Colorado and the Four Corners as well, to learn more about the process. And so, I spent, spent two afternoons in Del Norte, and it was a, it was a big deal. The other thing, I guess I'd just like to echo what Victor was saying, it was kind of, it's sad to see some of the comments that have been on social media about our police department, and not just our police department, but law enforcement in general. There, there are places for activities, and if you have to stop and go, gee, am I gonna get a ticket? Am I gonna get in trouble? You might not be in the right place for that activity. It's that simple. I mean, and there are rules, they're simple rules, and I think if we respected each other more, respect for your neighbor, for this, the people that live on the street that you're driving down and heart-rotting down, if you stop and think about how respectful it is for them, does the activity belong there? It does belong somewhere else. There was a comments about a State Patrol stop that was made on the eight-mile road, and the speed that people were traveling, and that it was funny, it was hilarious. It wa, it's not funny. A classmate of mine, their child died on that road because someone blew through the intersection at County Road. It's not funny. There are simple, there are simple rules to follow, and our country would be in much better shape. We would be much happier if we could just respect that and follow some of those.
And sort of to, excuse me, my voice is leaving, add to your comments, Kathy, with harvest, please be careful on all those crossroads. I can't tell you how, I've lived here my whole life, and I can't tell you how many people have lost their lives or had accidents, as they were going to or from school, or to or from work, or to or from an activity. The potato trucks get going, and they, they stop, they, you know, they, but don't pull out in front of them, they can't make a quick stop like you can. Just be really, really super hyper-aware of that, especially during harvest. And I was at the Potato Festival for the dreaded downpour. Oh my gosh, that was wild. I did not have the wherewithal to get my video camera out on my phone and tape it. It would've been just amazing to see what people were having to cope with. It was just, I've never seen anything like that here. And I'm sorry about your signs. I was running, and I went and stood under the big pavilion, and as I was running under that pavilion, I saw that kinda has a spire on top, and we were, with a metal roof, and it was packed with people, and I thought, boy, this- And it was packed with people, and I thought, boy, this is, I'm not standing with these sheep. And so I ran and ran to my car, and I probably am the one who should pay for those because I got them running to my car. I, that was bad news, and I'm glad it didn't last for very long. But it was pretty scary, and I didn't like everybody under that pavilion. I thought that was maybe not the best thing. Uh, but other than that, um, happy fall. Here we are.
Thank you for not mentioning that that started as soon as I should've.
I didn't get to have any of their Amish cake, or whatever you brought, whatever that was. Darn, I missed the Amish cake.
Because this is on YouTube, I wanted to, uh, make this comment for the community. I look out here and see more youth here than I do the community members, and it's aggravating because, uh, Facebook warriors, this is the place to be. Not on Facebook. You got something to say, bring it here. Because when the high school is out doing the number of the community people here, I respect you youth for being here. Thank you very much.
Well, it's actually almost semester, so they gotta, really. They've gotta get here and get their papers signed.
Just go with me. Don't make the excuse, okay? So respectfully, I do appreciate you kids being here, even though you have to. It, it's awesome, because this is about community, and this is where you start. You can be part of the community. Potato Fest, that was an awesome time. I was in the dunk tank, and when they said the mayor was gonna be in the dunk tank, I didn't think they were gonna ever stop lining up to dunk me. I went home, showered, and got back to, uh, help my wife take the tin down and received another shower. I had so much water that I could pull water out of my boots for my, running down my back. It was great. It was a great time. A lot of people. It was fun. The PD, I'm gonna ready, go right with these guys. You guys, if you don't like having to be confronted by a police officer because you did something wrong, don't break the law. It's a real no-brainer. If you don't wanna be in trouble, don't break the law. And to complain about it, I'm with Kathy, that hundred and fourteen miles an hour is what the state trooper caught that guy going down the eight south. Hundred and fourteen. Do you have any idea what would happen to that guy if he hit a rock? A rabbit? If a cow walked down in front of him? Accidents happen, and people driving erratic, um, the consequences are harsh because it changes everybody's lives, so. You know, I'm, I'm backing these guys up. It's Facebook warriors. You guys are really tough out there on Facebook, and make the rude comments that you make. These guys with the badges put their life on the line every day for us. And they deserve that respect. That's the way I look at it. Community events, everybody, it's coming, fall. Uh, yeah, it's coming quicker than I'd like, but, uh, Christmas is coming. And, uh, traffic, once again, what Kathy said. You guys watch out on the roads, 'cause there's a lot. Next week we'll start the full-blown harvest, so you gotta pay attention to all that. And pay attention to your surroundings, and take care of yourself. Always watch what's going on around you. Uh, don't forget the ruck. Wednesday, next Wednesday, I think there's, this ruck is supposed to be for the animal shelter, correct?
Is it? I haven't heard that.
I think, but I don't know that for sure. And, uh, if you see something, say something. Don't be afraid. If you see something that's not right, doesn't look right, don't hesitate to give him a call. The police department, so they can just check it out. Maybe nothing, but it could be something, so. Outside of that, I really don't have anything. Thank you all for being here this evening. And thank you all the city staff for what they do. So, uh, that being said, we will adjourn the meeting. Yeah, we'll adjourn the meeting until, uh, October
Second.
Second.